We welcome, do we have, um, we're not acting on anything, so we just rise the flag, right?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bullet of Friat?
Here.
John Green?
Here.
Tom Gratton?
Here.
Stan Latham? And Brian is on us, why would they? We don't have any action to take, so we don't like officially open or close, really, right?
No, we don't have to.
It's your meeting.
Okay, so, the purpose of this work session today is to look at, um...
Sorry about my bad.
...building of facilities maintenance, for the past three years and then going forward. So, you know, the bullet points here, you know, what's important, the importance is, just like in your home, the more current you are on your maintenance, the less expensive it is, the more manageable it is. When we run into problems and you see it in school districts who don't pass their budgets and go on what we used to call austerity, now they call it contingency, you can't do certain capital projects. You can repair a roof 20 times, but you can't replace it. So, what you end up doing is just band-aiding problems, and then you eventually end up paying, you know, twice as much. You can repair a truck, but you can't buy a new one, and different things like that. So, you know, there's a great deal of importance in keeping ahead of the maintenance, you know. You don't want your roof leaking on a 100-year-old building and costing you tens of thousands of dollars of damage with your electrical circuits and your walls and everything inside. You want to fix that before you get to the point where that's happening. So, we have a whole host of completed projects from the last three years, and these are only the major projects. Obviously, the regular daily maintenance that goes on is not mentioned in here. We have a number of in-process projects, and then we have a whole list of future projects that the Building and Grounds Committee will be meeting. Anthony's at a conference right now, but as soon as he gets back, he's going to reach out to our architect and get some dates, so that we can have a meeting to prioritize them. And then, there's also a slide in here to talk about the funding of it, because the funding of this over the last three years has been unique compared to many years, and quite obviously very advantageous to us. So, there's just a few pictures in here. I wanted to play graphics we just had back at the laptop this summer down the elementary school. It was quite cracked and falling apart. You'll see the walls throughout the entire first floor of the high school and middle school, new scoreboards in our gyms, two in the high school, one in the elementary And this is a list, another picture down below, is the bathroom, down by the auditoriums. We went with hotel style. Took us quite a while to get the sinks in with legs on. Floating sinks like those are very easy to find. Floating sinks are not good in high schools, because kids sit on the floating sink, and then they get ripped off the wall. Finding a sink like that with legs on, it took us quite some time, but we really ended up getting a good product. Our distributor found it. It took a bit to get through, but these are really sturdy legs on there, and it fit exactly the way we wanted it, so it doesn't give you that floating look that you see in a hotel. But the rest of it is hotel style. Those are probably the bathrooms that are used more than any other bathrooms in this building by our community when we have events in our auditoriums. So, you know, as you go through, we have new scoreboards for baseball and softball. We have two out there that we purchased. One was donated by the Federal Flash Foundation, so we have three. Our parking lot this summer was cracked and sealed, it was crack-filled and sealed. Eventually, we'll be looking to replace that down the road. Electronic access locks in the elementary school. We are in the process of also putting them on all of our doors, including bathrooms and gyms, doors that didn't have them in the past. That will eventually lead to our enhanced security system, where we can lock down the entire building remotely. Kitchen flooring in the elementary school, the old one was coming up. There's a picture later coming up, I think, that has it. Toy storage outside the elementary school, high school windows. Our high school windows, when I first came here, we had a hard time opening them. Anthony, who does an excellent job, found a company that was able to put in a balanced fix, which cost us very little money compared to the place of a window, and they were, you could open them with one hand now. Even Patty, who used to have to stand in the box, and the two people to help her open the window. You know, it goes up and down now quite easily. Broken emergency e-bus windows in the elementary were an issue. There were a number of them that didn't open. They are all fixed. The condensation tank down in the boiler room, hot water heater in the elementary school, the schoolboys in the gyms we talked about, elementary playground parking lot, you know, that playground parking lot area was redeone this summer, and it was just painted a couple of weeks ago. We have a new auditorium roof, partially, we were planning to do it, partially it blew off in the storm, so we had to replace it. New gym roof, roof over the bus garage, HVAC in the auditorium was a big one that we had done the first year. Flooring on the first floor of the elementary school, there's a picture coming up of that. We ended up going with a 25-year flooring that does not require the maintenance of the terrazzo floors or the old tiles that were there, so it's much easier to maintain. Our guys can, you know, they can hit it with the, we call it, say, a molding machine. They go down and it cleans the floor, and there's, it needs no wax, it takes no wax, no sealer, no stripper, none of those things, so it's really easy to maintain, take care of. The new tennis courts, repair and repay existing tennis courts. We, you know, we seal all the cracks on those and have them repainted. Upgrade high school auditorium bathrooms, and then new guidance suite. And here's a couple of pictures of them. Obviously, here's the new tennis courts. These are those floors I was just talking about. We did the entire first floor of the elementary school. We had done rooms here that started before I even got here. They had done some rooms in this building. It is really the desired for, besides the terrazzo, anywhere we have tiles, going with this type of flooring really creates a scenario where it lasts significantly longer, it's impermeable to moisture compared to the tiles. You know, the tiles, when you get moisture with cement underneath it, it pop right up, whereas the adhesive on these tends to keep it down.
Are they about pieces that can be replaced easily, those tiles?
Yes, yeah, and they're, they're very easy to cut and move, and, you know, they're pliable. They're not like the hard tiles, and, you know, they, if you put these in your house, it's a lifetime warranty. In a corporate setting or in a school setting, it's a 25-year warranty. The elementary school isn't even 25 years old, and we had the entire back alcove, all those tiles that come up, they were up when I got here. We had to replace all of that two years ago, three years ago. In a section of the cafeteria, they're coming up, whereas these ones, we expect will last a very long time. They've had great success in the rooms that we put them in over here. We've had no issue with them. The nice part is, maintenance-wise, they're really easy to clean and upkeep, and they look great when they're done. So, these are in-progress, progress, projects. We epoxy high school tile walls. You saw the picture of it before. When I say it's in progress, we did not do the second floor here, because we're waiting to do the lockers, and doing the epoxy before the lockers is going to create a scenario where it's not going to match up correctly, and then we're going to have to have them come back. So, we're better off doing the lockers, putting in the framing all around the lockers, and we're waiting on them. They're coming and will be done. It's a project that we had in for the summer, but the material didn't come, so it'll be done over a shutdown break. After that, we'll have the remainder of the building, the entire, this entire building will have been epoxy on the walls. Door replacements and repairs is going to be ongoing, because we needed so many of them, and some of the materials just backed, or, you know, getting the, the doors that probably needed to repair the most are in the high school gymnasium, and getting the framing, which is the part that's sagging, has been difficult, and they're going to have to take down that whole wall, so it's going to need, you know, it's going to need time to get done. You know, if you notice, you can see in this picture, you can't see it here, because this was about a week before they put them in, but if you go over to the elementary school now, you'll see a set of white doors inside of here. So, there are now a set of white doors flush with the hall, with the wall. We left this outside piece because of the integrity of the building. We wanted to leave the alcoves, and we wanted to keep the, we wanted to keep it structurally looking the way it did, but right now, if we had an emergency, we had to lock down our elementary school gymnasium, different than the past, nobody can really see in, there's just the, there's this thin window that you have on any of the exterior doors, and nobody can really break in, you know, whereas these doors, although they're going to be in working condition, they're going to be there, they're not relying on keeping people safe in that auditorium, in that gymnasium. They actually just put them in about a week and a half ago, when I went over yesterday was the first time I saw them, and they look great, because all you see is a little bit of white when you walk up. You don't really notice a big difference, so, you know, the architectural integrity of the building is still intact, yet they're much safer than they were.
So, there are two sets of doors, in other words?
There's two sets of doors.
And the inside doors are kept locked during the day as well as the outside doors?
Yes, and the push bar, yes.
Okay. Kind of like this entrance, there's doors and doors?
Exactly like the entrance doors.
Kind of like a man trap thing, like the...
Similar, yep.
Little person trap thing?
Yeah, one-person man trap. Middle school, high school lockers are not yet installed, but are ordered. They will be done during the year. They were a project from last year that couldn't get done over the summer. Fire escapes they put in, they ordered new lights when we had our safety inspection. One of the areas they noted was that the lighting there was bad, so we ordered it, our guys would put it in. We ordered portable bleachers, because some of our bleachers were really just in disrepair and dangerous, so we can't use them. So, right now, what they do is they kind of like carry around the two sets that are there to whatever event's going on. We ordered ones that are on wheels, they can be hooked right up to the trailer and pulled, or we can hopefully leave things in certain places and not have to, you know, that's really when you kind of beat them up, is when you're dragging them around. And then our new boilers, paperwork has been sent to the state for approval, so we're in process with the boilers. So, these are all in project, in progress projects that are going on right now, and then these are future projects. You know, the first thing we're going to do is schedule a building rounds meeting, have the architect come in, but these are things that have either been identified by us as a district, and they're things that can be added to, you know, now at this meeting or anytime in the future, or they were identified by, by the architect when he did the inspection of our entire building. So, flooring and ceiling replacements in the high school and the elementary school, some of that moved on already. We did the, we did the areas that really had the most difficulty. The first one we did was the, was the kitchen. The tile was coming up in the kitchen. We now have, you know, we have regular hard tiles in the kitchen. We didn't use the architectural flooring, the two's outside. And then we also have that in the entryway, an exitway for the back of the elementary credentiaire, where you come in, you know, so that's been done. But there's a number of identified areas where we have to work on our ceiling and tile work throughout, like we have tiles coming up in the elementary cafeteria that need to be repaired. They've been repaired many times, but there's a moisture problem, so we have to look at a different product or something. So, the auditorium carpet replacement, this is one that Anthony has been working on for a while now. If you've been in there, you can tell it's starting to get a little rumpled and wrinkled, because it has stretched out so much, and it's worn in certain areas. It is a much bigger project than he originally thought it was, and he called in a couple companies to look at it, but that's absolutely something that we've identified as needs some, you know, we get a tremendous amount of use out of that auditorium, you know, so it's something that we'll need to look at down the road. Door repairs and placement will continue going on. Middle school windows are an area that the architect highlighted. You know, they're, they're a unique set of windows, you know, like it's almost as if they custom-built them, they're very...
They were custom-built.
Yeah, so every one of them is a different size, they're hard to replace or repair, they have gaps in them.
Can I ask a question about the two bullets with the window replacement? We had, we had an energy performance contract. Of course, I can't remember the specifics, because it's been retired, I think. I think we retired it early, because we had the funding. But is this something that we should look towards, an energy performance contract? Because those very windows were discussed at the time with Johnson Controls. I know you're all impressed by my knowledge of these windows. I was on the committee...
Oh, you dreamed about that at night.
I was, I do, I was on the committee for a long time, and maybe it's time to look towards an energy performance contract.
So, the last one we looked at was for solar last year, and we had them come in and do a full, and they, they said, "Look, we'd love to sell you it, but you're going to lose money on this deal."
Then it doesn't pay, we can't do it, right?
And they told us not to do it. They said, "Solar's great, you know, we'd love it for the economy. You bought us in to do a full report on whether it's financially beneficial for you guys to do," and the answer was, it wasn't.
Okay.
So, what we can do, John, if you can make a note, we can find out about the windows, you know, and see if an energy performance contract is something that is beneficial.
There was, I found them, well, the time before, very helpful, because it's not going to benefit us, and there's no sense. And at that time, they also put that material on the windows?
Yeah, the film on, so UV doesn't come through, it doesn't...
Keeps it warm, cool, yeah, right, right, right.
That was a project many of us did. We did that, I remember doing it in my own building. But certainly, we can bring, we have companies that, you know, they'd be more than happy to come in and do a full analysis for us, because the work goes to them, if it works out.
Right, right, and there's no cost to have the analysis done, if I'm not mistaken, and...
They came and, you know, Anthony has good connections with those guys. He called up one of the guys from one of the solar companies, and they came in, and, you know, he said, "This is exactly what I would recommend," but I, he said, I'm trying to remember his exact words. Pretty much what he told us is, "The solar panels will be antiquated, and you won't be getting anything from them before you've even paid them off."
But the windows might be worthwhile, because, because the windows, some of those windows, like in the armory, they're all, we talked about replacing those, right, John? Years ago, in this junior, senior high school?
Yeah.
Maybe that could just be considered as part of a...
Absolutely.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I, it was in my notes, but I figured I'd ask it there.
Anybody else, jump in when you, when you see things, jump in, because the history that I know about South Hall is three years and about six months, or when it comes to this type of stuff. You know, I've read a lot about the other history, but none of this shows up, so if there's anything, please, jump in.
I think that elementary school might be just 25 years, right, Eric? You guys were in...
Fifth grade.
Fifth or four, okay.
You should be...
It might be just 25 years, about now.
It's got to be close.
Yeah.
It was, it was a little over 20 when I came, in my fourth year.
And I'm not going to tell you how old Eric is, because...
Elementary school window replacement and repair, you know, we repaired, we repaired the windows that needed to be repaired for safety reasons, but there are others that need work over there. Their window style is, it's not a great style. They're these massive windows that swing open, so that as soon as the wind blows, they bend them, and they, they're just not, you know, they're great looking on face, but not in functionality. You know, they're not really great in the way they work, so there's going to be some replacement and repairs there. We have the brick seal that you guys saw, the pictures of last year, outside. You know, there's been that, I forget what he called it, but basically, there's weathering on those bricks, and there's been weathering that's been going on for years. Sealing it will slow that down. Nothing's going to replace where it's at, and he said that it's a very stable, you know, there's no concern about instability or anything like that, but we, you know, his recommendation was to absolutely seal it, slow all that down. The middle school roof is another, you know, I would say if we had to, you know, if we had to really, middle school windows, middle school roof are probably the two...
You didn't replace that roof when we redid all the roofs?
No, that's an old roof. What's nice about it is it's pitched.
Right, it is versus the flak here.
It's filled, so there's nothing leaking on it, and it has lasted probably, I had them come out and look at it to see if it was past its warranty. It was like 10 years past its warranty, so...
Just the, the brick ceiling? The bricks are where, at the middle school?
No, they're on this side of the building here.
Oh, on the building?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can show you, it's been a problem for warmth on and off here.
It's interesting, when you, when it's pointed out, you see it.
Yeah.
You know, they've weathered away a lot.
Yep.
And it's weird how it takes place.
The nice part is that they were built in a time...
Lots of the north, that's why.
Yeah, yeah.
They were built in a time when bricks were cheap.
Yeah.
So, instead of going straight up and down with the bricks like they would now, they teed them all in. So, there's, there's a lot more brick there than what you see, which makes it a lot more stable than what it would be if it was a 20-year-old building. You know, if we had that type of weathering on the elementary school, we'd probably have to take it down, put it back in. Whereas here, it's extremely stable, but he said, you know, he said, "Seal it, and you're going to get a lot more years." You know, eventually, it continues to weather the way it does, then we will have to take them down. When you walk out this back door, directly in front of you, it's on that wall, and then also around the other side.
Yeah.
And lots of it out, but you can't miss it.
It's the weather.
Yeah, yeah.
North, east.
It is, yep. Again, we're very lucky that the highest parts of the building here, you know, they were built in a day and age where, you know, they used twice the material they use now, because material wasn't, they didn't want it hollowed away, because that was too expensive, so they would just add more in, you know. So, middle school roof replacement is something we're going to have to do. Mike has been looking at, there is a number of different options, you know, they have roofs that roll out, they have others that you spray on, like also, because of the fact that our middle school roof is that pitched, thin-fiber roof, so he's looking at different options for us and how long that'll last. You know, bus garage improvements, our two bus garages over there, we put a, we put a roof on one, you know, they, they can use a little bit of work. They're not in the greatest of condition, they're not in bad shape, but they definitely could use a little bit of work, and we get a lot of work out of them. Portables, I would say, if you ever walk behind, portables, I've seen better days.
Yes.
You know...
I've spent a lot of time out there, the last week and a half at my son's soccer games, and there's...
So, our portables, all they're used for right now is storage.
Yeah.
They have weeds growing up through them.
And we got rid of, how many of them before Tony?
We got rid of two or three.
Two, the two on the side.
There's two more that need to do.
So, one of which, now that the, the fact is, we need the storage, so we put one of the pole barns up, and then we poured cement in it, put in electric and all that stuff. Eventually, with the two remaining portables, that's the way I would like to go, because we do need the storage, we need the space. We use it for athletics, we use it for...
Drama.
We use it for a bunch, we use it for a lot of things.
Well, the sets from the drama productions are stored there.
So, it's space that we absolutely need, but we can't continue to rely on those for much longer. The pole barns are not totally expensive. I think Anthony told me they came in and put it up in like two days, and then since then, we have added cement flooring and some different things, which we can continue to do with, with any future project we have. But the reality is, if we went with hard pack, you know, on the floor, and the pole barn, we'd probably be in better shape than what we have right now. You know, like, it's the point where if you walk in the wrong place, you foot goes to the floor, like, they're, they've really seen better days.
The shop.
Yeah, they've served a good purpose, and they've been, they've been good for what we use them for, but portables and modular storage buildings are absolutely, getting rid of the portables and put in modular storage buildings. And then the basketball court, right between the tennis court, the high school basketball court, that needs some work. You know, that's something that we looked at last year, but it was just too expensive to do, like prices were crazy. We looked at the year we did the tennis courts, because we figured they would be here, and we tried to get a bid with them being here with all their equipment, and the ceiling, the guy that would seal it would have been the same guy that was sealing the tennis courts and all, but it was, it was like over a six-figure price.
Really?
It was ridiculously expensive.
Gosh, it doesn't seem like it's that big a piece of area there.
It's not that big, and the truth is, what we were looking to do was, we were looking to have one full-size basketball court and a pickleball court. So, we were going to move a couple of the hoops a little bit, but not too much, and then we would also have an area where there'd be a court where you can just play like two-on-two or one-on-one on the end. So, we would lose nothing, and we would add a pickleball court on top of it. The problem is that everybody had so much grant money to do outdoor facilities, that there was so much work, the bids were just overly inflated. One of the, one of the guys that works for the office told me, he said, you guys didn't choose to do that. I said, "No, it was just too expensive." He said, "That's because we bid like, we were bidding like double what we normally would bid, because we have more work."
More work than they can handle.
He told us working straight through December, the tennis courts, you know, so that kind of feeds in a little bit to this slide. You know, so the funding of these projects, there's a lot of different ways that we fund, you know. Bond work is the way some of these different things are done. We have not done much through bond work. You know, we finished up the, much of what was in the bond.
That's what I wanted to ask, have we finished that?
We have the last project, right now, the kids are working on, the pergola.
The pergola, and that, that closes that? What happened to the part about the home and careers room, making that smaller? That was part of that project, wasn't it?
That through the, through the bond work?
Yeah, I thought that was one of those, okay, I could be wrong, maybe it was an add-on that just didn't get done.
Yeah, so I went through it. The tennis courts, we used...
That was...
...the bond money on the tennis courts. We also used grant money...
Right, that was...
And then we used some other capital money. So, the way that we've been paying for all these, you know, this one here is probably, is the most unique one. So, for instance, the $300,000 ventilation and HVAC system, all of that went through a grant, because we were given a great deal of grant money. It's the same reason that to redo the basketball court was $110,000, just because everybody was doing that type of work. And those are perfect one-shot deals, you don't have to do it every year, because you're not getting that grant money every year. You know, we have paid for UPK through a grant that we didn't in the past, all sorts of different things. So, grant funds, you know, grant funds have been, they've been something that we have utilized for a great deal of this. You know, we're, we're working on the gaming suite down there. All of that is fully grant-funded, you know, so there'll be six gaming computers, the rooms being painted, the monitors, the whole deal, all of that through grant, you know. We'll pay for a clump advisor, and that's it, you know, so, you know, that, that is really big. The bond work is a way that much of it has been done traditionally. You know, we're paying back three-quarters of a million on our bonds annually, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're paying between $750 annually and $1,000 on our bond, but that will eventually come to end, and then that can become either capital work, or, you know, we may look at re-bonding. Reserves, we have used, we used our repair reserves. You know, the nice part about all of these is that, with the exception of, you know, capital, budgeted capital work, which we typically have about $100,000 out of our budget, all of these, none of them impact our tax money. You know, they are monies that we have put aside to do these projects, or they are grant monies that have been given to us, you know, or, you know, we had a child that we budgeted for to be out of district that moved, and we ended up with some surplus, so we took that money, and we, you know, fixed one of our roofs, or replaced one of our roofs, or whatever they be. So, the only one that's actually built into a budget here is the bond work, which we're paying back, which has been in there since you had your bond, and, and any budgeted capital work, which again, we budget about $100,000 for capital work, right?
Like a hundred, $110,000?
Yeah, I think we were $110,000 last year. And, you know, it's good practice to budget capital work in your budget, because then, you know, if you want to do a bond, you don't, there's a difference between wanting to do a bond, because you want a certain piece of facilities, and having to do a bond, because things are falling apart. You never should get to the point where you have to do a bond, because your buildings are falling apart. Many districts do, but what you, you know, you want to build in capital work, so that you can upkeep your buildings in a way where you never get to where you have to do it. Because inevitably, when you have to do a bond, that's when the economy goes into the tank, and you don't have the extra, excellent amount of money every year to pay back your bond, you know. So, these are our sources of funding for, reserves, bond work, you know, budgeted capital work, grant funds, surplus created through the use of grants, and then, now, when I say, you notice I have surplus created by the use of grants and grant funds? So we have used straight grant funds to do projects. And then there's a number of other things that we have paid for here through grant monies, because it's allowable in the grant that we had budgeted for. So that created a surplus, and then we took that surplus and replaced doors, or put in new windows, or whatever it may have been. You know, so it's the two areas that we have utilized those, those grant funding for. So I guess now it's questions, if you have any.
Oh, of course I do. Well, some questions, some comments. And I don't want to be critical of one thing, but I don't know how to say this, I guess I just have to say it. I don't know why we're calling it like guidance suite in a gaming suite. I think that sounds pretentious, almost like, shouldn't it be the guidance center? Or, I just don't under, I guess I struggle with words sometimes. And I don't know, suite makes it sound like grandiose to me, I guess. Where a center, it's like welcoming to our center and come to guidance, I don't know, it's just a matter of words to me. But it struck me when you said it, and struck me when you said it about the gaming room as well, like a gaming suite makes it sound like...
Yeah.
Thinking maybe it's too, too nice.
Like hotel-ish, almost, like a hotel instead of a...
Casino-type.
The gaming room is about 12.12.
And I get that, but I think like, and it's a gaming room for schooling, for education, for coding. And we get, we get that because we're in these buildings and understand it. But sometimes words are important for...
I agree. Yep.
To certain people.
Yes, yes, and, you know, the other comment is, a lot of this, or a great deal of it, takes place because of community support.
Absolutely.
Our, our budget every, well, the grants are, that's why I could, but that's still taxpayer dollars at the end of the day.
I would say that everything takes place because of community support.
And they, they supported our bond project, and we were creative when we did it, because the timing was good. The elementary bond requirement, so instead of turning around and doing the whole thing, we gave money back to the taxpayers and asked them for some of it to get those projects done that we felt were important, including this room and all of the other things that we did. So that's why the wording is, like, this is a media library center, I think we call, whatever, medism.
Yeah, I don't, I don't use the word to refer...
I know, I know, I know that's not the intent.
It's not intended as a luxury, you know? But I understand the point, you know? I can use better vernacular.
Well, not just, maybe somebody can, because I, like I say, I struggle with the words, but I think of...
The gaming room, we haven't, like, we haven't named it. We just started painting and working on it.
The cubicle.
Yeah.
The closet, most of them started closets.
The closet, the tennis stations, that was what we originally talked about, let's show you my physics. And six will be fine.
And six is better than zero.
Six is better than zero, it's coming through a grant, it's, we don't have a huge population that is going to want to be exclusively, but, you know, it'll be a nice...
At the same time, right?
Yeah, it's going to be a nice addition.
We talked, I think at a meeting, a few meetings ago, I think Tom was on the board, are you intending to put a proposition on the ballot in May with the budget for any capital projects that we need voter approval for? Because if so, I think now's the time, you have to start getting the ducks in a row, right, Chuck, if I'm not mistaken? Because it takes a few months to... So I didn't know if that was, if there was an intention of doing that, we discussed it at one point.
You know, so when we get together with the Building and Rounds Committee, which is going to be soon, you know, that would come out of that conversation. Like, it would be very difficult for me to answer that question without, like, we know...
Knowing what the work is.
Yeah, you know, there's certain work, but is just part of your capital work that you put into your budget. And then there are other capital projects that you need separate voter approval.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, you know, like the middle school roof, the windows, those things, if they could be bonded together in a proposition...
I don't know when our bond, when is our bond?
I have to check, less than 10 years.
Yeah. So, so when we get together with the Building and Rounds Committee, we can bring all that information, the financial information to the...
And we have capital funds, we would just need voter approval to expend them for these kinds of projects. I mean, that was the intent of putting this money away year after year.
So there's the two ways, is, you know, there's the capital funds that we have put away and into different reserves.
And then there's bonded.
And then there's bond, then there's also regular capital work in your budget.
Right.
So if the roof costs $150,000, we put about $110 into our budget right now. So when they vote on our budget, that capital work would be in there. So it all depends on which way you want to do it. And that's, that's why I can't answer the question, because Mike would have to tell me, you know, what it would cost to do certain things. And it's very interesting, like, he's given us prices on that roof, and when we get pricing up from a company, it's good for 30 days max. Some of them are only good for two weeks, because the prices are changing so rapidly because of the ability to get material and how much it costs.
So how do districts then do that now, where, if you're going to use your capital funds and need voter approval, but you need to know ahead of time the cost and...
So they did what we did with the, with the reserve funds to do the boilers, we did an up-to number.
Okay, okay.
Now, when we did the up-to number, it was running between $900,000 and $1 million per boiler. When we actually sent stuff to the state, it was a few hundred, it was a couple hundred thousand dollars less than that, right? They came down.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, I think the estimate on what it would cost came down. Now, the fact is, that won't be done until next summer at the earliest, so what's the actual cost?
Cost is going to change, yeah.
Of course. You know, now the trend right now is things are coming a little bit, you know, now the trend right now, believe it or not, compared to two years ago, when we started this process, is down. Will it come back up? Hey. Hi.
Where's the robotics suite?
They're in the robotics room, right around the corner.
Okay, sorry.
Nah, no problem.
In the robotics suite.
Yeah, I was looking for that.
They let me in when I got back. So, yeah, so the way that you do it is exactly how we did, the repairs are up to...
Up to.
Yeah, like, we sat down with him, and we said, "Okay, if we were doing it today, with all of the piping, plumbing, and all the, you know, how much could it be?" You know, he, he said it would be between this and this. We took that top price and multiplied by four, obviously, because we were doing four